Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, are we live? A call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. It is Monday, October 12th. We're meeting here at Union Pines High School. It is now five o'clock. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
I should approve the agenda.
Nope.
I'm sorry.
A motion to enter closed session.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I make a motion, Madam Chair, that the board enter into closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a, 1a 5 and a 6, and General Statute 115c-319, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11a 3.
Your second?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Thompson, second by Mrs. Caldwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will now enter closed se-- the motion carries 7/0. We'll now enter closed session. We will return at 6:30.
At this time, I will call back to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. At this time, I will call back to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. At this time, I will call back to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move the agenda be approved. Madam Chair, I move the agenda be approved. Madam Chair, I move the agenda be approved.
Motion by Mr. Dennison? Motion by Mr. Dennison? Motion by Mr. Dennison?
Second. Second. Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thompson. All those in favor? Second by Vice Chair Thompson. All those in favor? Second by Vice Chair Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. We'll now pause for a return to a student-led pledge and a moment of inspiration. We'll now pause for a return to a student-led pledge and a moment of inspiration. We'll now pause for a return to a student-led pledge and a moment of inspiration.
My name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm in second grade. I go to West Pine Elementary. Please stand for the Freshenations.
My name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm in second grade. I go to West Pine Elementary. Please stand for the Freshenations.
My name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm in second grade. I go to West Pine Elementary. Please stand for the Freshenations. And Freshenations salute the United States to remember and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Freshenations salute the United States to remember and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Freshenations salute the United States to remember and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And if you did not catch her name, that was Rolaly Solana, who is in the fourth grade student at West Pine Elementary. And if you did not catch her name, that was Rolaly Solana, who is in the fourth grade student at West Pine Elementary. And if you did not catch her name, that was Rolaly Solana, who is in the fourth grade student at West Pine Elementary.
Me lingo por Alma, Lord Ada. Porque hablo español puedo escuchar los cuentos de abuelita y decir familia, madre, amor.
Me lingo por Alma, Lord Ada. Porque hablo español puedo escuchar los cuentos de abuelita y decir familia, madre, amor.
Me lingo por Alma, Lord Ada. Porque hablo español puedo escuchar los cuentos de abuelita y decir familia, madre, amor. Porque hablo inglés puedo aprender de mi maestra y decir I love school porque soy me lingo.
Porque hablo inglés puedo aprender de mi maestra y decir I love school porque soy me lingo.
Porque hablo inglés puedo aprender de mi maestra y decir I love school porque soy me lingo.
Puedo leer libros y books. Tengo amigos y friends.
Puedo leer libros y books. Tengo amigos y friends.
Puedo leer libros y books. Tengo amigos y friends.
Disfruto canciones y songs, juegos y games.
Disfruto canciones y songs, juegos y games.
Disfruto canciones y songs, juegos y games.
Me divierto al doble y algún día porque hablo dos idiomas podré hacer doble esfuerzo para ayudar el doble de personas y lograr todo el doble de bien.
Me divierto al doble y algún día porque hablo dos idiomas podré hacer doble esfuerzo para ayudar el doble de personas y lograr todo el doble de bien.
Me divierto al doble y algún día porque hablo dos idiomas podré hacer doble esfuerzo para ayudar el doble de personas y lograr todo el doble de bien.
Hi, my name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm a fourth grade student.
Hi, my name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm a fourth grade student.
Hi, my name is Rolaly Solana Salgado. I'm a fourth grade student.
I go to West Pine Elementary School and I'm going to be reading to you bilingual by Alma, Lord Ada.
I go to West Pine Elementary School and I'm going to be reading to you bilingual by Alma, Lord Ada.
I go to West Pine Elementary School and I'm going to be reading to you bilingual by Alma, Lord Ada.
Because I speak banners, I can listen to my grandmother's stories and say familia, madre, amor.
Because I speak banners, I can listen to my grandmother's stories and say familia, madre, amor.
Because I speak banners, I can listen to my grandmother's stories and say familia, madre, amor.
Because I speak English, I can learn from my teacher and say I love school because I am bilingual.
Because I speak English, I can learn from my teacher and say I love school because I am bilingual.
Because I speak English, I can learn from my teacher and say I love school because I am bilingual.
I can read novels and books. I have amigos and friends. I enjoy canciones and songs, juegos and games and have twice as much fun.
I can read novels and books. I have amigos and friends. I enjoy canciones and songs, juegos and games and have twice as much fun.
I can read novels and books. I have amigos and friends. I enjoy canciones and songs, juegos and games and have twice as much fun.
And someday because I speak two languages, I will be able to do twice as much to help twice as many people and be twice as good at what I do.
And someday because I speak two languages, I will be able to do twice as much to help twice as many people and be twice as good at what I do.
And someday because I speak two languages, I will be able to do twice as much to help twice as many people and be twice as good at what I do.
Thank you. And that, I believe, was Quatellupay Boral Amalis, who is a second grade student at West Pine. That's the name I have down. Thank you. And that, I believe, was Quatellupay Boral Amalis, who is a second grade student at West Pine. That's the name I have down. Thank you. And that, I believe, was Quatellupay Boral Amalis, who is a second grade student at West Pine. That's the name I have down. Thank you to those fine young ladies who have joined us online tonight. To you, Vice Chair Thompson. Thank you to those fine young ladies who have joined us online tonight. To you, Vice Chair Thompson. Thank you to those fine young ladies who have joined us online tonight. To you, Vice Chair Thompson.
If everyone would join me with a moment of silence, please. If everyone would join me with a moment of silence, please. If everyone would join me with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're excited to bring back our monthly Engage Inspire Succeed recognitions. We're excited to bring back our monthly Engage Inspire Succeed recognitions. We're excited to bring back our monthly Engage Inspire Succeed recognitions. Typically, our monthly recognitions honor a certified staff member, a classified staff member, a volunteer, and a student, along with other special recognitions. Typically, our monthly recognitions honor a certified staff member, a classified staff member, a volunteer, and a student, along with other special recognitions. Typically, our monthly recognitions honor a certified staff member, a classified staff member, a volunteer, and a student, along with other special recognitions. Because of limits for visitors in our schools, we will temporarily suspend honoring volunteers until we are past the pandemic. Because of limits for visitors in our schools, we will temporarily suspend honoring volunteers until we are past the pandemic. Because of limits for visitors in our schools, we will temporarily suspend honoring volunteers until we are past the pandemic. The school board typically recognizes these honorees in person. The school board typically recognizes these honorees in person. The school board typically recognizes these honorees in person. In order to adhere to social distancing requirements and an effort to keep our honorees and their families safe, In order to adhere to social distancing requirements and an effort to keep our honorees and their families safe, In order to adhere to social distancing requirements and an effort to keep our honorees and their families safe, we will be recognizing our honorees virtually and hope they are watching from home. we will be recognizing our honorees virtually and hope they are watching from home. we will be recognizing our honorees virtually and hope they are watching from home. Dylan Thomas from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Dylan Thomas from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Dylan Thomas from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. A 2010 graduate of Union Pines High School, Dylan Thomas is in his third year of teaching and coaching. A 2010 graduate of Union Pines High School, Dylan Thomas is in his third year of teaching and coaching. A 2010 graduate of Union Pines High School, Dylan Thomas is in his third year of teaching and coaching. When walking down the math hall, one will hear and see top-notch examples of student engagement coming from Mr. Thomas's classroom. When walking down the math hall, one will hear and see top-notch examples of student engagement coming from Mr. Thomas's classroom. When walking down the math hall, one will hear and see top-notch examples of student engagement coming from Mr. Thomas's classroom. He integrates technology into his lessons and hits on the learning styles of each of his students as he strives for academic success among them all. He integrates technology into his lessons and hits on the learning styles of each of his students as he strives for academic success among them all. He integrates technology into his lessons and hits on the learning styles of each of his students as he strives for academic success among them all. Mr. Thomas pushes hard to model how to give school and life the very best. Mr. Thomas pushes hard to model how to give school and life the very best. Mr. Thomas pushes hard to model how to give school and life the very best. His optimistic and confident nature shines throughout the campus. His optimistic and confident nature shines throughout the campus. His optimistic and confident nature shines throughout the campus. But when he's on the sidelines of a football game, you witness passion and determination at warp speed. But when he's on the sidelines of a football game, you witness passion and determination at warp speed. But when he's on the sidelines of a football game, you witness passion and determination at warp speed. He is a tremendous asset to the school, students, athletes, and his colleagues, and Union Pines is so thankful he is home in Viking country. He is a tremendous asset to the school, students, athletes, and his colleagues, and Union Pines is so thankful he is home in Viking country. He is a tremendous asset to the school, students, athletes, and his colleagues, and Union Pines is so thankful he is home in Viking country. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Sam Kearns from Vast Lakeview Elementary School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Sam Kearns from Vast Lakeview Elementary School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Sam Kearns from Vast Lakeview Elementary School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Mr. Sam Kearns supports the Vast Lakeview Elementary School team as a bus driver. Mr. Sam Kearns supports the Vast Lakeview Elementary School team as a bus driver. Mr. Sam Kearns supports the Vast Lakeview Elementary School team as a bus driver. He is the smiling face families see in the morning and in the afternoon as they arrive and depart from school. He is the smiling face families see in the morning and in the afternoon as they arrive and depart from school. He is the smiling face families see in the morning and in the afternoon as they arrive and depart from school. Mr. Kearns graduated from Pinecrest High School, where he drove a bus during his junior and senior years. Mr. Kearns graduated from Pinecrest High School, where he drove a bus during his junior and senior years. Mr. Kearns graduated from Pinecrest High School, where he drove a bus during his junior and senior years. After high school, he served 20 years in the United States Marine Corps, After high school, he served 20 years in the United States Marine Corps, After high school, he served 20 years in the United States Marine Corps, 16 years with two different fire departments, and many years with the state of South Carolina. 16 years with two different fire departments, and many years with the state of South Carolina. 16 years with two different fire departments, and many years with the state of South Carolina. He returned to Moore County in 2018. He returned to Moore County in 2018. He returned to Moore County in 2018. Mr. Kearns is not just a driver, but a wonderful, caring advocate for all children. Mr. Kearns is not just a driver, but a wonderful, caring advocate for all children. Mr. Kearns is not just a driver, but a wonderful, caring advocate for all children. Last June, he was right on the lawn in front of the school cheering on our fifth graders during the promotion ceremony. Last June, he was right on the lawn in front of the school cheering on our fifth graders during the promotion ceremony. Last June, he was right on the lawn in front of the school cheering on our fifth graders during the promotion ceremony. He also spent his summer checking in on the school administration, staff, and students. He also spent his summer checking in on the school administration, staff, and students. He also spent his summer checking in on the school administration, staff, and students. We certainly appreciate Mr. Kearns and all he does for Vast Lakeview Elementary and Moore County schools. We certainly appreciate Mr. Kearns and all he does for Vast Lakeview Elementary and Moore County Schools. We certainly appreciate Mr. Kearns and all he does for Vast Lakeview Elementary and Moore County Schools. Congratulations, Mr. Kearns. Congratulations, Mr. Kearns. Congratulations, Mr. Kearns. Senior Aiden Patterson from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Student Honoree. Senior Aiden Patterson from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Student Honoree. Senior Aiden Patterson from Union Pines High School is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Student Honoree. Aiden first popped up on the radar at Union Pines as a freshman, looking for ways to get involved and make a great first impression. Aiden first popped up on the radar at Union Pines as a freshman, looking for ways to get involved and make a great first impression. Aiden first popped up on the radar at Union Pines as a freshman, looking for ways to get involved and make a great first impression. His well-crafted words for an American Legion history essay contest won him a certificate and recognition ceremony. His well-crafted words for an American Legion history essay contest won him a certificate and recognition ceremony. His well-crafted words for an American Legion history essay contest won him a certificate and recognition ceremony. But more importantly, it taught him that opportunities surrounded him. But more importantly, it taught him that opportunities surrounded him. But more importantly, it taught him that opportunities surrounded him. Possessing a combination of motivation and follow-through, Possessing a combination of motivation and follow-through, Possessing a combination of motivation and follow-through, each year Aiden continued to shine in the classroom, each year, Aiden continued to shine in the classroom, in student leadership roles, in club activities, and in athletics. each year, Aiden continued to shine in the classroom, in student leadership roles, in club activities, and in athletics. in student leadership roles, in club activities, and in athletics. His well-rounded personality and diverse interests promote an incredible gift of looking outside of the familiar to be a more global thinker. His well-rounded personality and diverse interests promote an incredible gift of looking outside of the familiar to be a more global thinker. His well-rounded personality and diverse interests promote an incredible gift of looking outside of the familiar to be a more global thinker. Aiden has had an outstanding ability to share ideas across many forums, Aiden has had an outstanding ability to share ideas across many forums, Aiden has had an outstanding ability to share ideas across many forums, maintain a respect for other opinions, maintain a respect for other opinions, and to speak knowledgeably and confidently when asked to serve as a student representative. maintain a respect for other opinions, and to speak knowledgeably and confidently when asked to serve as a student representative. and to speak knowledgeably and confidently when asked to serve as a student representative. Aiden has earned the respect of his peers, teachers, coaches, and administration, Aiden has earned the respect of his peers, teachers, coaches, and administration, Aiden has earned the respect of his peers, teachers, coaches, and administration, and the growth he has reached since that freshman year essay contest is nothing short of remarkable. and the growth he has reached since that freshman year essay contest is nothing short of remarkable. and the growth he has reached since that freshman year essay contest is nothing short of remarkable. Union Pines is proud to call Aiden Viking Strong. Congratulations, Aiden. Union Pines is proud to call Aiden Viking Strong. Congratulations, Aiden. Union Pines is proud to call Aiden Viking Strong. Congratulations, Aiden. And our other recognition this evening is for a very, very special team from West Pine Middle School. I think they are all now at Pinecrest High School. And our other recognition this evening is for a very, very special team from West Pine Middle School. I think they are all now at Pinecrest High School. And our other recognition this evening is for a very, very special team from West Pine Middle School. I think they are all now at Pinecrest High School. The 2019-2020 West Pine Middle School Eighth Grade Odyssey of the Mind Team. The 2019-2020 West Pine Middle School Eighth Grade Odyssey of the Mind Team. The 2019-2020 West Pine Middle School Eighth Grade Odyssey of the Mind Team. Sanim Cobb, Ellie Wattis, Anna Catherine Foster, Thomas Mann, Cooper Ogden, Jackson Locklear, and Connor Cuthrill are all now freshmen at Pinecrest High School. Sanim Cobb, Ellie Wattis, Anna Catherine Foster, Thomas Mann, Cooper Ogden, Jackson Locklear, and Connor Cuthrill are all now freshmen at Pinecrest High School. Sanim Cobb, Ellie Wattis, Anna Catherine Foster, Thomas Mann, Cooper Ogden, Jackson Locklear, and Connor Cuthrill are all now freshmen at Pinecrest High School. During the 2019-2020 school year, Moore County Schools sponsored five Odyssey of the Mind Teams. During the 2019-2020 school year, Moore County Schools sponsored five Odyssey of the Mind Teams. During the 2019-2020 school year, Moore County Schools sponsored five Odyssey of the Mind Teams. Two at West Pine Elementary, two at West Pine Middle, and one at Pinecrest High School. Two at West Pine Elementary, two at West Pine Middle, and one at Pinecrest High School. Two at West Pine Elementary, two at West Pine Middle, and one at Pinecrest High School. At the regional finals on March 7th, all five teams secured a first or second place win At the regional finals on March 7th, all five teams secured a first or second place win At the regional finals on March 7th, all five teams secured a first or second place win and also won the prestigious Omer Award, an honor for any district competing in Odyssey of the Mind. and also won the prestigious Omer Award, an honor for any district competing in Odyssey of the Mind. and also won the prestigious Omer Award, an honor for any district competing in Odyssey of the Mind. When the state finals competition was canceled due to COVID, When the state finals competition was canceled due to COVID, When the state finals competition was canceled due to COVID, the eighth grade team from West Pine Middle the eighth grade team from West Pine Middle elected to participate in the 2020 Odyssey of the Mind Virtual World Finals. the eighth grade team from West Pine Middle elected to participate in the 2020 Odyssey of the Mind Virtual World Finals. elected to participate in the 2020 Odyssey of the Mind Virtual World Finals. They met via Zoom multiple times during shutdown and using their creative problem-solving abilities They met via Zoom multiple times during shutdown and using their creative problem-solving abilities They met via Zoom multiple times during shutdown and using their creative problem-solving abilities virtually explained and presented their solution to problem two networking to a panel of judges from around the world. virtually explained and presented their solution to problem two networking to a panel of judges from around the world. virtually explained and presented their solution to problem two networking to a panel of judges from around the world. Their solution earned them second place in the entire world. Their solution earned them second place in the entire world. Their solution earned them second place in the entire world. This is the highest ranking of any Moore County Schools team in known history inside the Odyssey of the Mind program. This is the highest ranking of any Moore County Schools team in known history inside the Odyssey of the Mind program. This is the highest ranking of any Moore County Schools team in known history inside the Odyssey of the Mind program. Congratulations, Sanim, Ellie, Anna Catherine, Thomas, Cooper, Jackson, and Connor. We expect more great things. Congratulations, Sanim, Ellie, Anna Catherine, Thomas, Cooper, Jackson, and Connor. We expect more great things. Congratulations, Sanim, Ellie, Anna Catherine, Thomas, Cooper, Jackson, and Connor. We expect more great things. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. But before we move on, And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. But before we move on, And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. But before we move on, I do want to offer thanks to Mr. Andrew McCormick and the staff here at Union Pines High School for allowing us to invade their auditorium this evening. I do want to offer thanks to Mr. Andrew McCormick and the staff here at Union Pines High School for allowing us to invade their auditorium this evening. I do want to offer thanks to Mr. Andrew McCormick and the staff here at Union Pines High School for allowing us to invade their auditorium this evening. And again, also to Mr. Kent Eklund and our IT staff who worked so diligently to set things up, And again, also to Mr. Kent Eklund and our IT staff who worked so diligently to set things up, And again, also to Mr. Kent Eklund and our IT staff who worked so diligently to set things up, along with Laura May and Catherine Murphy in our PR department who are making this happen. So thank you very much. along with Laura May and Catherine Murphy in our PR department who are making this happen. So thank you very much. along with Laura May and Catherine Murphy in our PR department who are making this happen. So thank you very much. At this time, Dr. Grimacy, we'll go to our program highlights. At this time, Dr. Grimacy, we'll go to our program highlights. At this time, Dr. Grimacy, we'll go to our program highlights.
Yes, ma'am. And I will defer to who's in charge of the program highlight tonight. Yes, ma'am. And I will defer to who's in charge of the program highlight tonight. Yes, ma'am. And I will defer to who's in charge of the program highlight tonight. Ms. Murphy? Ms. Murphy? Ms. Murphy?
That would be me.
That would be me. That would be me.
Very difficult to see everybody with the lights. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy. Very difficult to see everybody with the lights. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy. Very difficult to see everybody with the lights. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
That would be me.
That would be me. That would be me.
First off, would anyone like any hand sanitizer?
First off, would anyone like any hand sanitizer? First off, would anyone like any hand sanitizer?
Plenty here if you need it.
Plenty here if you need it. Plenty here if you need it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. October is National Principals Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. October is National Principals Month. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. October is National Principals Month.
Through their leadership and pursuit of success for each student,
Through their leadership and pursuit of success for each student, Through their leadership and pursuit of success for each student,
principals guide and support their schools in ways large and small every day.
principals guide and support their schools in ways large and small every day. principals guide and support their schools in ways large and small every day.
As they faced new challenges under the COVID-19 pandemic
As they faced new challenges under the COVID-19 pandemic As they faced new challenges under the COVID-19 pandemic
and the required health attestation, mask, and social distancing protocols,
and the required health attestation, mask, and social distancing protocols, and the required health attestation, mask, and social distancing protocols,
our principals came through when it mattered most to reopen our schools
our principals came through when it mattered most to reopen our schools our principals came through when it mattered most to reopen our schools
with the health and safety of our students and staff top of mind.
with the health and safety of our students and staff top of mind. with the health and safety of our students and staff top of mind.
It is because of them that we were able to welcome our students and staff back
It is because of them that we were able to welcome our students and staff back It is because of them that we were able to welcome our students and staff back
and prove that if we follow the protocols, we can get our kids back in classrooms once again.
and prove that if we follow the protocols, we can get our kids back in classrooms once again. and prove that if we follow the protocols, we can get our kids back in classrooms once again. National Principals Month is our way of honoring their dedication
National Principals Month is our way of honoring their dedication and thanking them for getting it done in the time of COVID.
National Principals Month is our way of honoring their dedication and thanking them for getting it done in the time of COVID. and thanking them for getting it done in the time of COVID.
And now let's take a look at a short video recognizing each of our principals individually.
And now let's take a look at a short video recognizing each of our principals individually. And now let's take a look at a short video recognizing each of our principals individually. And that concludes our program highlight, unless there's any questions or comments.
I think we probably could give our principals another round of applause. Their job descriptions are limitless. So thank you very much for highlighting them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda be approved.
First, motion by Mr. Dennison. Second by?
I'm second.
Ms. Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. All right, at this time, we will now move to public address to the board. Vice Chair Thompson, do we have speakers?
We do, Madam Chair. And first, I would like to just take a moment to go through our public address procedures. We have several who have signed up to speak to us this evening. The board allows a 30-minute period. We have, I don't know if you have an agenda, but you'll see on our agenda that there are two separate items for public address if the first one exceeds the 30 minutes. if the first one exceeds the 30 minutes. Each speaker has three minutes to come to the podium here at the bottom of the stage to speak on behalf of your item. A clock will be displayed on the screen, and we ask that you adhere to the three-minute limit. So, we will get started, and I will call three of you, and if you would just make your way to the aisle and then just social distance, and we'll call you up, and that way you'll get set to come on down. First, we have Dr. Frank Hyatt. If you would come on down and make your way to the podium, sir. Next, if you could get a line to the wall would be William, is that Shapen?
Shaper.
Shaper? And then after Mr. Shaper would be David Hensley? Hensley? Dr. Hyatt, are you ready? You may begin.
Okay. I have a statement and a question, but I just learned you don't answer questions directly. So, I'm hoping you'll entertain my question and possibly give your answer in the pilot. It's election time, and voters will be interested in your opinion on this. My statement concerns the 1619 History of America published by the New York Times, and it's being taught now in many schools. This is one description of it. One, America was founded in evil. Two, America is irredeemably divided and must dismantle her founding principles. Three, America has also been terrible for her citizens and the world. Now, that made me get a lot of argument from people. I didn't read the history itself, of course. But it is no doubt that it's basically the authors of this view our country as guilty and fatally flawed. A different opinion was once offered a few decades ago at a time when America was getting some bad press by the Prime Minister of England, of Great Britain, Tony Blair. A reporter asked him, "Prime Minister, what do you think of the United States?" And he said, "Well, two things occur to me. Everybody wants to get into it, and nobody wants to get out of it." Like most people, I know, I believe it's bad for our young people to be taught by respected teachers that this is a fatally flawed country. We can only get worse if they are. My question is, will you go on record that you will vigorously oppose having the 1619 History of America taught in our schools? You might put that in the pilot. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter, members of the school board, Dr. Grimaceley, and fellow parents, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening and address the board. My name is Colonel Cleat Shaper, and I'm a concerned parent of a Union Pine student athlete. Ladies and gentlemen, we are 26 days past the governor's green light to open our elementary schools. We are 106-plus school days without full-time, in-person education for our students. Board members and Dr. Bob, your task is to run our schools. That is why you were elected, and that is what you get paid to do. The challenge is for you to get to yes tonight. Yes to opening our elementary schools, starting with tonight's vote. Yes to opening our schools and fully getting our students back in the classroom where they belong. Yes to athletics. Yes to listening to your constituents. And yes to not continually living in fear. As for my family, we're not afraid. We don't have a choice. When it was time for me to go back to work, my employer did not offer me an input if I wanted to come back and how I felt about it. What I do fear is boredom. I fear children living at home without proper supervision. I fear lack of interest in education, which will lead to bad behavior and poor life choices. I fear that our high schoolers here in North Carolina are being left behind by our neighboring states whose children are fully open and go into their schools and to having full-time athletics. I fear the weak and timid leadership by the school board that keeps our schools closed with statistics you cannot possibly defend. The Health Department advisor has been quoted saying, "North Carolina COVID deaths are predominantly among nursing home residents." In Moore County, there have been zero COVID deaths in school-aged children. Zero. Moore County's own COVID dashboard reports no COVID clusters in any Moore County school, to include the private schools, which I remind you are fully open and, believe me, at full capacity. The dashboard also reports that there have been no COVID deaths in Moore County of anyone under the age of 50, which I think that pretty much covers all of our schoolchildren. How can you possibly substantiate the need to limit our kids' access to in-person education only two days a week? So, here we are at a crossroads of whether the school board can get to yes and begin reopening our schools. In my experience, when a challenge presents itself, you either make it happen or you make excuses. So, Dr. Grimaceley, I challenge you and the board members to get your foot off the neck of our children in Moore County and provide them with the proper face-to-face education they deserve.
We would remind you again that there's a three-minute time limit on speakers.
Hello, I'm Dave Hensley. I'm a resident of Southern Pines, and I'm a parent of two children, actually, young ladies, who attend Moore County schools. I'm here to talk about, well, actually, I'm here to discuss, once I'm elected to the Board of Education, I want to ensure there's a peaceful transfer of power. That was a joke, everyone. You can laugh. The, I'm here to talk about a very serious topic, and that is that you all must vote this evening to immediately return our young people and our students to five days of in-person education. The four-day solution is not, I mean, obviously, it's better than the two-day solution, but it still doesn't meet the needs of real-world people. The single mothers, the dual-working households, who, if their children's out one day a week, they got to scramble, they got to leave work. My employees struggle with that. Everyone struggles with that. You all, the private schools have done it. You all need to find a solution to return our young people to five days a week. Why? Well, as was presented in your last week's work session, your own survey, which had a remarkable, you know, response for the parents, 76% of the parents, per your own survey, want the schools fully reopened. Then, the next slide was 75% of the faculty and staff surveyed wanted the schools open. Maybe it's vice versa, but the bottom line is three-quarters of the parents and three-quarters of the staff want the schools fully reopened. The numbers are almost equal. Seems easy to do. The 25% go 100% virtual, then the three-quarters who want them fully open, you can accommodate. Other states have figured it out. Private schools have figured it out. You guys need to figure it out. I could figure it out. I can't help but notice some hypocrisy here, and that is faculty and staff of Moore County schools can send their children and are sending their children to Moore County schools four days a week, but that same opportunity is not available to me. It's not available to other people. It's not available to anyone. It's not available to my employees. That can't be tolerated. There's two people on the Board of Education who have school-aged children. I can't help but wonder if they're on the four-day-a-week program. Be interesting to know. Also, McDeeds Creek, if you pay 600 bucks, your children could be there five days a week from 7:30 to 5:00. How can you possibly justify five-day-a-week daycare at McDeeds Creek Elementary if people pay money but denying the same families the North Carolina constitutionally guaranteed right to a public education? For those reasons, I ask that you implement full-time schooling immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Ellis, Ms. Emily Rainey, Ms. Sarah Harmon.
My glasses have fogged up, so give me a minute. So, I appreciate the opportunity to address the school board tonight. I'll be brief. I'm a PhD medical virologist. I spent most of my career at Burr's Welcome, which was a research-based pharmaceutical company up in the research triangle park. And virologists work, research virologists work with physicians. We are the ones that developed the antiviral drugs and the vaccines. We are the ones that take a sample from a physician's patient and try to grow a virus out of it, and then, once we grow the virus out of it, characterize it. The risk in the school has been addressed a moment ago. Based on what I have heard and read, the risk in K-1 through 12 of these children getting COVID is minimal. They don't have the comorbidities, the diabetes, the heart disease, the chronic obstructive pulmonary disease that you find in elderly patients. And because of that, the risk in this age group is much, much, much lower. Pediatricians have a special relationship with virologists. Many pediatricians specialize in infectious disease because so many pediatric diseases are viral diseases. All the pediatricians that I know at Duke, at UNC, and down here, if you ask them would they send their child to school, the answer is 100% yes. So, I think your job is not unlike what the FDA does. When the FDA is facing something like a COVID pandemic, and they have a vaccine candidate or a drug candidate that has limited testing, but they have a huge unmet medical need out here, sick patients, they have to balance the risk and make a decision. With remdesivir, they have obviously said, "We'd like to have been able to do more testing with this drug, but frankly, we don't have the time to do it." And what we see so far looks good, so we think the benefit outweighs the risk, and we will allow it to be used. I see your job as balancing the risk with your students. You have a risk, it's low that they might be infected in school. On the other hand, you have all these other things that can occur with these children at home, and we're hearing about them on TV all the time. More drug use, alcohol, disruption of the family because the children aren't in school. So, I would strongly urge you to take that approach as you, balancing the risk of either of your decision alternatives when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Grace. I am an active-duty special operations officer and the founder of Moore County Citizens for Freedom, a 1,500-member group of Moore County citizens interested in reopening Moore County schools. Most importantly, though, I am a young mom. And all of my friends in the same age bracket as me find it completely untenable as working parents to have the schools continue to be closed. So, what I want to talk to you tonight is about empathy. It's not about data. You've heard the data. We already know that the numbers don't support continued closure. There's no mystery to that anymore. What I want to talk about is empathy for the single parents, for the working parents who had to quit their jobs because they cannot afford daycare, because they can't afford private schools, and now they're at home finding ways to tutor their children through their Chromebooks because of this completely unviable virtual learning solution for young children. All of my friends are young mothers. They all have school-aged kids. And I have multiple friends who call me in complete disarray and despair over their inability to handle the fact that they are working a job and trying to educate their kids. Everybody can see that if you can afford to go find a public education or a private education, people are doing that. That's why enrollment is down by 400 students in Moore County schools. That's the reason why we need to open the schools now, not wait till January. It's for empathy's sake. It's for those working parents that can't make ends meet. It's also for those students who had to have their lives completely disrupted to the point of depression, which is up. We know that. We've had multiple suicides in Moore County because of the shutdown. We have children who, you know, the teachers are required to report abuse if they know about it. So, these students are at home, and there's no teachers to report these abuses that may be happening at home. People are falling through the cracks because of this closure. That's why this isn't about data any further. It is about empathy, and I urge you all to vote yes to the immediate reopening of Moore County schools for empathy's sake, for decency's sake. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have children in the schools. I'm a taxpayer. I'm very concerned about quality of education in this county. Obviously, the schools have to be reopened. The charter schools and the private schools have opened. They're doing just fine. The children are fine. There appears to be no documented justification on the basis of data, as a virologist has just informed you, for the unprecedented stunning closure, ongoing closure of Moore County schools on the basis of protecting children from the C-19 virus, which it's been absolutely documented puts children at less risk than driving to school or being struck by lightning. Therefore, the reasons for your continued decision-making appear to be very unfortunate and appear to be attributable to what? Is it political? Is it misguided decision-making? It is not justified by data, and it is causing serious harm to the children of this county. Your duty is to educate them. The schools have been opened in other states for quite some time, and the children are fine. In Sweden, they never shut down the schools. In Finland, they did. There was absolutely no difference in cases. It is well documented, again, that kids in K-12 are minimally affected by this. And therefore, as a taxpayer, I find this incomprehensible. It's absolutely stunning. So, I suggest that you put your heads together, consider data, consider costs, and consider the damage that you're inflicting on the children of this county, and take responsibility for it.
Thank you. Next, we will have Catherine Rucker, Luke Arno, and Vic Allen.
Good evening, members of the school board and superintendent. My name is Catherine Rucker, and I'm the founder and head of school at Moore Montessori Community School. And thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Moore Montessori Community School has made an offer to purchase the Southern Pines Elementary School campus for $1,080,000. Our offer to purchase the surplus property at its appraised value represents a win-win-win. It is a unique opportunity to maintain the campus as a public school and continue its 100-year tradition of serving public schoolchildren and families of Moore County. The campus will be an educational hub for the community, home to the first and only public Montessori school in the region, with plans underway to open a public preschool. It will also serve as a site for the Boys and Girls Club, and we will develop partnerships with local nonprofits to preserve and restore the gymnasium and auditorium for the benefit of the community. Hundreds of community members support our efforts, and the pilot endorsed our work in its May 30th editorial. Tonight, I want to review the process we have engaged in to date. Per Chairwoman Carter's request at the June 8th board meeting, Moore Montessori clarified in writing our ability and willingness to purchase the Southern Pines Elementary School site for an appraised value of $1,080,000. Per the July 13 board meetings, board minutes, quote, "The board reached consensus to give further consideration to the charter school's request in August or sometime thereafter." In August, per the superintendent's recommendation, the school board voted to delay a final decision until the working session on December 7th, but welcomed ongoing informal communications. Last week, we shared with the Moore County School Board a formal purchase offer for the Southern Pines Elementary School campus at 255 South May Street. We appreciate Chairperson Carter's offer in the June 5th pilot letter to the editor that, quote, "If Moore Montessori wishes to submit a formal proposal to purchase the site for its appraised value, I will see that it's promptly and fairly considered by the board." Members of the school board, we are ready to take the next step in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Arno, and I am a teacher for Moore County Schools. However, tonight, I'm here to speak with you as the president of the Moore County Association of Educators, the local chapter of the North Carolina Association of Educators. I would like to speak in support of the recommendation made by Health Department Director Robert Whitman and the Moore County Schools senior staff to remain in Plan B for the rest of the semester. Like many teachers, I have experienced the full range of emotions, both positive and negative, over the past six months. Whether it was frustration over students not responding in the spring, sadness over not getting to finish the year, the typical school year, fear and anxiety from returning to school in person with a pandemic raging, or joy over getting to share a classroom with children again, teachers have experienced it all. As with any journey, there have been hiccups, but our district has implemented Plan B in such a way that most teachers feel safe and students are able to learn. Many teachers have remarked that with smaller class sizes in Plan B, they are able to cover more material and make up for only having two days of in-person instruction. Plan B is working. More importantly, with smaller class sizes, students are able to observe social distancing at all times during the day, limiting the community spread of COVID-19. Unfortunately, Plan A, as described by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, does not require social distancing. It is strongly encouraged, but districts are given flexibility if it is not a possibility due to class sizes. Class sizes in 4th and 5th grade, under current class size guidelines, can have over 30 students. I myself, in previous years, last year included, have had multiple 4th and 5th grade classes that were 32, 33, and even 35 students. At the Board of Education work session, it was quoted that the class size numbers, if Plan A were implemented, could be as many as 31 students. Ultimately, classrooms are not built to house that many students with social distancing. Having students only two days a week also ensures fewer students have to quarantine for each positive case, thereby ensuring a smoother continuation of learning for the most students possible. Please believe me when I say, no one wishes we could return to pre-COVID norms more than teachers, but we must do so with a safe, measured approach. I know this is a difficult decision with many factors that you have to weigh. Thank you for all you've done. I know that you have the best interests of all at heart. Teachers will carry on the best way they can, no matter what the situation, but they already give so much for their students every day. Do we really want them to feel that they have to risk their health and their lives too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Vic Allen. I'm the shop teacher at Calvary Christian School. And we've been open since the beginning of the year, a regular year. We have over 200 students in our school. Nothing's changed. We have all safety procedures in effect. We've had one child, matter of fact, he was in my shop class, that had, that was diagnosed with the Chinese virus. We put in our, in our, in our safety systems. Matter of fact, I went in quarantine 10 days and came back to work. Since then, we had no cases of the Chinese virus. And our school is going gangbusters. We're filled up from 1st to 7th grade. We can't take anymore. Which, I just heard, $600 for daycare. We send our kids to our school for $310 a month for a classical liberal education. I didn't say leftist. I said liberal. And when I heard that you were asked a question, whether you're teaching the 1619 Project, to be even asked that is embarrassing. It's embarrassing that you are even asked if you're teaching that. I would go on record and say, I am not, Moore County is not teaching that foolishness in an American agenda, which leads me to believe that this whole mess that we're in right now, it has nothing to do with the Chinese virus. It's political. It has to be political. You've listened to all the data. Has nothing to do with the virus. I know more kids in Moore County that committed suicide than died of the Chinese virus. Our church and 200 other churches, when the governor shut down worship in this country, we took him to court, and we won. Every church can be open in North Carolina right now. A lot of people do not choose to go to church. When we do not exercise our God-given rights to assemble, to worship, and free speech, those rights will atrophy, and they'll go away. And our kids are learning that they're not important. And the simple fact that you were asked if you teach the 1619 Project is embarrassing. I would rather have my kids raised by wolves than send them to a school that taught anything that resembled that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that ends our public comment section for the evening. I'm going to exercise my authority as a board chair to respond to that one question about the 1619 Project. I have been asked that question before, and I have answered it very completely. The 1619 Project is not a part of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. It is not studied within our Moore County schools or other public schools within North Carolina. We strictly follow the Standard Course of Study. It is not included. So let me say that one more time. The 1619 Project is not included in the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, and it is not taught in the Moore County schools. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to board action. Dr. Grimacey.
Madam Chair, during your work session last week, Mr. Andrew Cox, Executive Officer for Budget and Finance, presented to you your original budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Mr. Cox is available this evening to answer any final questions that you might have. Otherwise, the superintendent recommends that you consider a motion to approve the FY 2020, 2021 proposed original budget as it was presented.
Are there questions for Mr. Cox concerning the budget?
I just had one clarification, Mr. Cox, if you don't mind. With the remaining consolidation cost that was projected for $320,000, there was another excerpt that showed Southern Pines was going to cost out at $175,000 of that money. And my question is, have we, have we spent the money for Aberdeen? Is, are those dollars closed out at this point in time? And we still just remain with the Southern Pines dollars?
So the $320,000 was a combination of, of the Aberdeen and Southern Pines.
Right.
And so it was positions and different things associated with opening those schools. So Aberdeen Elementary has opened.
Okay.
And so the remaining that we would be covering would be for the Southern Pines schools opening.
Okay, okay.
And it is a total, we mitigated that cost down 175,000 from 320,000 as presented last week.
Are there other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Cox, I know we spoke about this last week in terms of the classified salary supplement or potential bonus for them. I know we are not able to provide them a salary increase at this time due to the budget limitations that we have. When do we expect to have a conversation about the salary bonus or a structure of a bonus supplement for them?
That is something we will bring back to the board. I don't have a timeline at this point. We've got to figure out, one, how much additional cost that we're going to have related to COVID. And using that COVID money is part of what I'd said we would have, may have dollars available for possible uses is using some of the CARES Act money. That's provided that we don't have additional costs associated with the virus, additional things that are unforeseen. So I don't really have a timeline. We just have to look at where the needs come out and what available funding we have to provide that.
Thank you.
It's interesting that the state saw fit to provide a bonus to the teachers, not a raise, but a bonus, but did not see fit to provide one for classified personnel who have continued to work throughout this session.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there other questions? Yeah, I think one thing we must note is that expenses do not stop. And in looking toward, I think I might be echoing.
Again, some feedback. Can you all help out? There's, there's a ringing up here.
That's better.
That in looking toward the future, expenses will continue, knowing that our children are going to need additional services from emotional, physical health aspects. And these things don't go away, and we know that we do not adequately provide yet for nursing services within the schools. But we do need to look ahead and see that it's going to be an uphill battle to provide everything that is needed. All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the budget be approved as presented.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Mr. Weaver. Is there further discussion? All the, all those in favor of approving the budget as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Dr. Grimacey.
Madam Chairman, at your work session last week, Dr. Seth Powers provided you with update on public input on three surveys that the staff had recommended for your consideration a month ago. At that time, you were asked merely to endorse those surveys for public input. We received that, and there was a particularly elevated level of concern from the public about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So Dr. Powers withdrew that survey from the current consideration for a little bit more staff assessment of those concerns raised by those that raised them. And so at this time, the superintendent recommends that the school board consider a motion to authorize administration of only two of the three. That would be the Social Emotional Learning Survey and the Climate Culture Student Survey, neither of which garnered the same level of concern from those that participated in our request for input for the 2020, 2021 school year. And Dr. Powers is available to answer any questions that anyone has.
Are there questions for Dr. Grimacey or Dr. Powers?
Uh, Dr. Powers, this is John Weaver. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey has a parental option to opt out. Is there, the Social Emotional Learning and the Culture surveys do not, but students have the option to not take that, that test, those surveys. Is there any reason why we can't give parents an opt-out option on those two surveys as well? Why, what would keep us from doing that?
That's something we could consider doing. We're not required to do it because those two surveys don't have questions that are related to personal information or informations that the YRBS has related to sexual activity, drugs, alcohol use, those kind of things. Also doesn't ask any questions around political affiliations, family members that are a part of the school district, those kind of things. So we don't have to. It is something that we could think about considering. As you stated, they are voluntary, so if parents do not wish for their children to take the surveys, they can instruct their children not to take it, and there will be no repercussions if they do not take the survey when it's administered.
And currently, school board policy does not require that to be provided for the reasons that you've just stated. So if the board wanted to tighten that requirement, then, then that would be a matter for the Policy Committee to consider.
So that would have to go before the Policy Committee to?
Uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to, but, but it would be helpful because then you can ensure consistency in the application of the policy going forward.
Um, I'd like to share something that, that I did find most interesting. I know that tonight, we were just voting to continue with the, the Social Emotional Learning Survey and the School Climate Culture Survey. But it was interesting to me that the state school board met October 6th through 8th and have enacted a new policy relating to student mental and emotional health. And so I'd like to share just a little bit of that tonight because it is something we will need to come back and revisit. They have authorized each K-12 public school unit to adopt and implement a plan for promoting student mental health and well-being and for assessing and improving upon the effectiveness of support for the mental and social emotional health and substance use needs of its students and staff by July 1st, 2021. Each unit is encouraged to conduct a mental and social emotional health and substance use needs assessment and resource mapping to inform plan development. That's exactly what we had considered as the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we are now going to be highly recommended to perform. These requirements include a school-based mental health policy which must be in place by December 2020. And I am pleased to note that Moore County Schools has completed and enacted such a policy at previous meetings of this board, and it is because we care about the whole student and his emotional, physical, and academic well-being that we already have policies in place. But to those who are concerned about the at-risk behavior survey, I would encourage you to examine the new state policy. It was considered at the State Board of Education meeting in, in October 6th through 8th. But it is something that will bear further work. All right, are there any further questions for Dr. Powers? All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion made by Ms. Thompson, second.
Second, Dr. Brown.
Uh, second by Dr. Brown. All those in favor of approving the endorsement of the Social Emotional Learning and Climate Culture Student Surveys for 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Okay, back to you, Dr. Grimacey.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Locklear and various members of the staff presented to you an analysis and recommendation in response to the governor's provision of the analysis and recommendation in response to the governor's provision of the opportunity to provide in-person instruction for all students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade, and they did so during your work session last week. Without repeating the entire recommendation from the staff, the, in summary, the proposal was that we would provide a thoughtful and measured approach that would enable us to look at our Connect Academy, the families in the Connect Academy that would like to transfer into in-person instruction, and then the 173 families that indicated that they would not want to participate, that they would want to shift over to the Connect Academy. And we looked at all the pros and cons associated with that. The staff settled on a recommendation of the beginning of the second semester to enable that, and we stand by that recommendation. Dr. Locklear is here this evening to answer any questions, lingering questions that board members have. In the meantime, I do recommend a motion to approve the proposed plan for transition of all K-5 students to in-person instruction as presented during your work session last week.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Are there questions for Dr. Locklear or Dr. Grimacy at this point?
Dr. Locklear?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Get very close to the mic and speak very loudly.
How about that?
That's better.
All right. Last week, we talked a little bit about the 173 families that would want to go out of Plan B into the Virtual Academy. Can you talk a little bit about the effects of accommodating them in the Virtual Academy and what that would look like?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I believe there's a slide that also references that. Couple, just one slide down, Laura. Just challenging or opening up Connect Academy midsemester. We talked a little bit about this last week, Ms. Walla Miller. We've got about 59% of our Connect staff that teach both face-to-face and Connect in K-12, and 110 of those are K-5 staff. And so, if we were to essentially open up the Connect or Virtual Academy at this time, it could be potentially disruptive, where we would essentially have to reschedule. That would impact both student and staff schedules and could potentially impact teacher assignments of both face-to-face and Connect students. And that would not, that could... The reason behind that is because the way we built this is we built it based on students signing up in the summer, built that over a couple of weeks. And you've got situations where Connect classrooms are already very full. And if you were going to have students come in, you'd really have to reshuffle the deck, reschedule those teachers, and it could have a very disruptive impact to both students who've requested a change and students who haven't requested a change. That's the reality of doing that.
So, you're saying that some of our K-5 classrooms, teachers will get reassigned, students will have new teachers? Is that what the domino effect...
That is correct. There is potential that you'd have students who would have new teachers either face-to-face or in the Connect Academy.
And then, if we do that again in January for when we completely go back to opening up a Virtual Academy again and allowing folks to come back into the school system if they choose to, we would be doing that one more time? Is that correct?
That's correct. The plan is, and when we launched it in the summer and we opened it up, this opportunity in the summer, we asked parents to commit to one semester, and we said we would open that back up for the second semester. And so, that is still our plan, to open that back up for parents to enroll or re-enroll in the Connect Academy for the second semester, which would mean you'd have a new schedule, a new teacher assignment potentially for the second semester as well. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I have a... Tim, I have a request. Should this plan be approved, I would really like us to try to use the flexibility we have with the restart schools with Aberdeen, Robbins, and Southern Middle to see what additional services we might be able to provide, even if we have to come up with more money. And if there's any possibility of getting some of those students who desperately need help back in school, even if we couldn't get them all, just look at that to see if there's any way possible we can improve the situation for those three. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Locklear, you said there's 173 families that have requested a move to the Virtual Academy? That's not students, so it could be many more students than that.
That's correct. Those numbers represent families, could be multiple students in those families. Yes, ma'am.
Who would want to move immediately?
Who would desire an all-virtual option if we were to return to face-to-face instruction and under Plan A for K-5. Yes, ma'am.
Have we gotten any feedback from families who are in the Virtual Academy at this time but would like to get back into face-to-face?
No, ma'am, not in any formal basis. We have not surveyed them. No, ma'am.
It's been part of our intention, Dr. Brown, to, I think, Dr. Locklear means that they haven't reached out to us to say that, but we, in the coming weeks, will be asking that question. And so, we do anticipate hearing from any number of them, but we just haven't posed the question yet. Their commitment was for the whole semester.
Correct.
And we anticipate that there will be some that'll desire to move into in-person instruction, and I would think that even with Plan A in K through 5. And also, remember, under our proposal, we're also going to plan for 6th through 12 to come back as well. We don't know when, but we're going to plan for that eventuality. And so, that'll be part of the question. We're going to ask that question to everybody, not just K through 5.
Right.
Dr. Locklear, can you go to the slide where it says how many teachers are uncomfortable if we went to Plan A?
Yes, ma'am. That's another couple up, Laura.
Right there.
Right, just a little further up. Yes, ma'am. Approximately 51%, 52% of the teachers who were surveyed were uncomfortable to very uncomfortable. 51%, 331 of the 650 responses, that's the K-5 staff, were uncomfortable to very uncomfortable.
So, if we were to go to Plan A, what would we do with those teachers that are very uncomfortable? Would they just have to live with it, or would we be able to get them into Virtual Academy?
They would have to live with it.
That's if we did so immediately, but again, the benefit that we derive from slowing down a little bit and doing it in a much more methodical way over these coming weeks, it allows us to do exactly what we did in August. That's identify the number and percentage of our children whose families prefer that they be in all remote, and then try to match that up with the number and percentage of teachers that would prefer to be in that environment as opposed to in face-to-face. Okay? We were able to do that in August. There's no guarantee in any semester that we'll always be able to do it. Other school districts have not been as fortunate as us. But we'll make that effort to align those teachers that would prefer to be in remote learning with the families that prefer to be in remote learning. But that does, that takes time, and it takes a lot of thorough attention, and you want to make sure you get that right to match that up. So, it's one of the reasons why we chose to recommend a more methodical approach.
Dr. Metcalf has reminded me that 121 teachers of that 331 were uncomfortable to very uncomfortable. Is that correct, Dr. Metcalf? 49% of the teachers who responded were uncomfortable to very uncomfortable.
And we have 110 K-5 teachers who are teaching both virtually and in the classroom.
That is correct.
And that's a little easier done when you only have six first graders with you each time, but much more difficult when that becomes the 12 plus another eight who are watching virtually.
Yes, ma'am.
And all your time is consumed with the group that's in the classroom since we don't have teacher assistants.
That's correct.
Dr. Locklear, for those that are teaching both, those 110 that are teaching both in the classroom and virtually, is it possible that they, both of their classes could get changed, that they would have new students in both classes?
It's certainly possible, yes, ma'am, that you would see your assignment as a teacher have to be moved during this, if we were to implement it in a more quicker way. We know that's potential for that anyway, second semester as well. Yes, ma'am.
Right, so we know that's going to happen in second semester.
Potential, potential. As we have our families again express that they want to enroll in the Connect Academy or enroll in the Connect Academy, that requires a whole new scheduling of our students for the second semester.
I think we heard last week that if we were to move into Plan A, that it would take, what was it, two weeks to get the bus transportation worked out?
Yes, ma'am.
How many days of instruction would be left after that, before the end of the semester?
Well, approximately, if you said that sometime around the end of October, it would take in two weeks to get transportation going under our current model with students attending two days a week. That's about 14 days of in-person instruction, 15 days of in-person instruction that a cohort A or cohort B gets. If we were to start back and say that those families or those students, we went back five days a week, then they would be gaining about 22, 23 days of in-person instruction as a result of that. So, it's somewhere between 14 to 22, 15 to 23 days of in-person face-to-face instruction that would be gained by, at that point.
Let me get that straight. So, if we implement this October 26th, allowing time to rearrange bus schedules, to rearrange class schedules, to switch children from teacher to teacher, from virtual or out of a classroom into virtual if possible, we only gain 14 student days per cohort?
Yes, ma'am.
After all the upheaval that we would put into a child's life?
Yes, ma'am. If you also added Wednesday back in, it would be up to 20, 22 days of in-person instruction. Yes, ma'am.
Well, we understand we're facing Veterans Day, Election Day, Thanksgiving holidays.
Yeah, those numbers account for the holidays.
And so, it's a very, it's a very broken time anyway as we move ahead. But they would only, each cohort would gain just 14 or 15 days additional time in the classroom.
That's correct.
But it would be a bigger class.
Yes, ma'am.
And it could potentially be a new class.
Yes, ma'am.
That's your net gain.
Dr. Locklear, there was, remind me, there was 18 to 20 class sizes that we would have that would be 25-plus students to those classes. And in those classes, we would not have social distancing and our children would be closer together.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that about the number?
Yes, ma'am, it was. And it was in our presentation, I think 18. If you look at John's architectural drawings of what a classroom would look like, we have, I think, it was 18 classrooms that are 26 or above, 25 or above. And so, that would be limited to very limited social distancing in the classroom. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Locklear?
Yes, sir.
Right now, based on the construction schedule, we'll be opening the Southern Pines Elementary School at the first of the year. Are there benefits to waiting until that time instead of trying to make these changes in two schools ahead of time?
Yes, sir. I spoke with Principal Wagner about that. She certainly recommended that it would be much smoother, a much smoother transition that if we did all of these changes and implemented all of these systems and processes at one time as one school versus two schools among a time that they're already having a great deal of transition and having to do a great deal of work to get ready to move over, over the holiday break. Yes, sir.
And that was a question I had as well, and that would be the same for Northmore, right? Moving there into their new science and math classrooms?
I would, I don't want to speak for Principal Purvis, I haven't spoke to her, but I would certainly say that that would be my educated response to that is yes. She would much prefer to have one transition.
Do keep in mind that all in-person instruction is not an option in grade 6 through 12 prior to Christmas.
Right.
Good point.
Right.
But certainly, Ms. Wagner is on record and very clear about the fact that in order to gain no more than 14 to 22 days of in-person instruction, the trade-off isn't there. She'd much prefer to do it all after Christmas and mix that in with the consolidation of the two schools.
We heard from quite a few folks tonight about statistics and the fact that our children don't seem to suffer from the coronavirus quite the same way as adults and obviously don't transmit it the same way. And yet, I know we've had cases within the schools with students and with faculty, and it's necessitated quite a few to be quarantined because we can't take chances. And I did note in talking with Dr. Grimacy earlier that we currently have about 87 students under quarantine and another 27 staff members who are in quarantine at this point. Not that they have, at only nine are infected, we have nine infected students and two infected teachers, which you can get off our COVID dashboard, which is posted on the county website. But to realize that we have well over 100 people who are quarantined, folks may not realize how the virus is actually affecting classes as a whole. And when the classes are smaller, as we have just a cohort A of, say, eight children, that can mean only that cohort A and teacher are quarantined and the other cohort is not, which is something to consider as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we do want to do everything we can do to possibly slow the spread, whether it's through social distancing because we have the smaller classes inside or eating lunch in the classroom. A group of eight taking off their masks to eat lunch is very different from a group of 16 or even more than that coming into a single classroom to try and eat lunch. I know that's been one of our principals' concerns about how to distance children at lunchtime or breakfast and lunchtime, how to make use of the cafeterias but to still have supervision in them. Can you leave a teacher and a few children in the classroom and send the rest of the group down, sit in the hallway, or just what it might be? So, that still concerns me a great deal that we would be putting so many children back into a very close situation if we return earlier.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
We also have heard reference and received a lot of emails about other school systems that are opening. Dr. Grimacy, I know that we were one of the very few, one of about a third of the school systems in the state that actually opened in August to some in-person instruction. Of other school systems that we track regularly, most of them are just now ready to move to Plan B, is that correct?
There was, when you look at just school districts, about 60% of the school districts in the state, I hope I don't get these numbers mixed up. It was 60-40. So, it was either 60 Plan C, no, it was 60% of the districts were Plan B, but 60% of the students were Plan C. That's because your larger districts were among the Plan C districts. So, more students were in the all-remote learning, but more districts were in the Plan B. Now, what we've seen in the last few weeks is that as the governors open it up, it has taken about a month for school boards to meet and to analyze and to consider. Most of the districts that are making that early switch to Plan A in K through 5 fall under two different umbrellas. One are those, a number of very small districts out in the western part of the state where they have so few students and so much space that they've literally had all their children in for face-to-face instruction since the beginning of the year. And they don't have to call it Plan A because they've got so few children and so much space that they're able to social distance and follow all the other rules, not only in K through 5, but K through 12. So, a number of the districts that have either already been there or have made the quick switch are in a much more advantageous situation compared to some of us that are bigger. Now, Union County and Guilford County and Winston-Salem Foresight are different. They're much bigger, but they've been Plan C. And so, they're, they don't have, they didn't go through the structure of a Plan B where in our case, we went to Plan B, but we intimately tied our in-person instruction to our Connect Academy with all these teachers that are teaching in both. That complicates it for us. That's one of the reasons why this would end up being very inconvenient for a lot of families who would end up perhaps seeing their child's teacher change for the next six to seven weeks and then change again in the second semester. So, effectively, an elementary parent may end up having three teachers up until, let's say, whatever date you would do this, and then another teacher through Christmas, and then yet another teacher after Christmas. So, that's because the effort we made to get children in school two days a week, we made compromises that committed us through the end of the first semester, knowing all along that the semester break is what we were always looking at to make a change. If it was just Plan B only, we were going to open it up and let parents go back and forth between the Connect Academy. Now that it's Plan A, it's an advantageous time. We want Plan A on the table. We think that is the way to go for all the reasons why, you know, our State Department of Public Health and Human Services has said that's beneficial for children. Don't argue with that. It's how to get there and how quickly to get there. And that's what we think our plan represents. So as you look across the state, a lot of school districts, like us, want to move to Plan A. The only difference between them is how quickly they're doing it. And so there are many. By my count, as of today, I'd say maybe by the end of the night tonight, if you all approve Plan A in whatever form, we'll be up to about fifty of us, districts, that are doing that, including some larger districts. But again, remember, it's helpful for them. The fact that they have not been in school at all actually makes it easier for them to move to Plan A. We've got to work through some complications that have to do with the commitment that we made back in August. It just really needs to be given some careful thought.
I know quite a few counties have just gone ahead and said, they'll just stay virtual until January because it's easier to just go with the status quo until then.
Fifty is still not majority.
No, it's not.
There's a hundred and fifteen. And so I think you'll see a rapid movement here in October, and then you'll see a lull, and then it'll pick up again after Christmas. So you'll see the first wave of districts that'll move here in October, a lot of districts doing that. Then it'll, then it'll slow down and then it'll pick back up.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Dr. Grimace, we're not able to move as quickly because we are currently offering two days a week for all students K through twelve, unlike some of our other districts that are not in that position. As a parent of two middle schoolers, I'm extremely happy that we went to allow middle and high school students to go in two days a week because I think for their education and for their social, emotional well-being, I think it was really important to get them in the classroom for two days a week. But it sounds like that that choice that we made in August was, limits us a little bit in our flexibility to make changes quickly midsemester.
We were, we were under the gun, we didn't have a lot of time, and we knew that we had to have a linkage between our Connect Academy and our in-person instruction to make a go of it. And even into the third week of school, got to remember my notes here that I chatted down, we had, our peak when we first got started was, let's see, yeah, now I'm not going to be able to find it. Our highest single day of infections, reported positive cases was August 25th, August 24th for students and August 25th for staff. And then the ripple effect of that had to do with our quarantines. And on September 4th, we had a hundred and sixteen students out of school for quarantine, forty-five staff members for a combination of a hundred and sixty-one. And as much as three weeks into the school year, we weren't sure if we were going to make a go of it.
What do you mean by that?
So you got to remember where you were at that point, and the structure that we set up is what helped us make it through that period of time to maintain our Plan B structure. But it was predicated on having teachers that did both, where they had X number of sections in the Connect Academy, and we're committed to those with those families through the end of the first semester.
And I think what he meant was that it all sounded good on paper and getting everybody back for two days. And I second what you said about middle schoolers and our high schoolers. Those two days they have in the classroom are invaluable at any grade level. But it began to look like we could lose the battle early on as the numbers skyrocketed very quickly. Obviously now, we've learned how to handle it, the process has smoothed out, and our rates are very similar to what they are in the overall county. And we're able to keep all those classrooms open now and/or certain ones quarantined, but still learning from home remotely. And it shows that the Plan B that we enacted is working and working well.
Right.
Delivering two days of instruction to every child.
But the irony is, and the irony is true, that the very structure that made us successful to get through that time period right now is a structure that needs to, you need to apply a thoughtful approach to transitioning from that to all in-person instruction, K through five, or if we expand beyond that, which we are going to plan for in six through twelve.
Careful deliberation.
Yes, ma'am.
On how to make it work. I noticed that quite a few systems, as I say, are either going all virtual, all the way on until January, or attempting to do what we've been doing all along, which is bringing them back in stages and even a week at a time. I've heard some crazy plans that have been put out there. Are there other questions, considerations or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the proposed plan for transition of all K-5 students to the in-person instruction.
Is that the only motion you need? Do we need to add of the date or is that, that is not included on there?
I was going to ask the same thing, Mr. Hensley. Thank you. Mr. Dennison, if you could.
For clarification, Mr. Dennison, if you were moving that the...
I move that we approve the proposed plan for transition of all K-5 students to the in-person instruction.
All right, the motion has been made that we approve the proposed plan for transition of all K-5 students to in-person instruction in January 2021. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Dennison, seconded by Ms. Wallen-Miller. All right, at this time, we will take a... Do I need to do a single vote, an individual vote?
I have some comments that I need to make.
I have some comments before we vote.
All right, then there can still be discussion because we've had a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second. Now you can offer opportunity for comments, Madam Chair.
Who wants to start? You want to start, Dr. Graham?
I'll start. First of all, I want to thank the parents and students who emailed or called me over the last week. I appreciated hearing from you and your willingness to share your thoughts and concerns. The consideration to open the schools full-time or not open the schools and remain in Plan B has caused me many sleepless nights and thoughtful days. I researched the pros and cons of moving the opening of the schools to more days and to remaining in Plan B until January. I've listened to both sides of the situation. Do we continue with the two days a week and virtual learning, or do we go to four or five days a week? What I do know is that young children learn better when they have a qualified teacher working with them. These kindergartners and first graders from last year only had three-quarters of a year and now may only have a half a year if we don't start until January full-time. I know that this could be a logistical nightmare for our transportation people. Bus routes rearranged, who to pick them up, when to pick them up, where to pick them up. I want our students and teachers and staff and administrators to remain safe. Fortunately, from what I've seen and heard from teachers, Moore County Schools is doing a really good job sanitation, with sanitation and cleaning. Everyone, including our students, are working hard to have a safe environment. However, I feel we must review our plans. I would request that we reconsider the plan and look at phasing in our students, primarily those students who've been diagnosed with special needs, our kindergartners, our first graders, second and third graders, over to a four, over a four or five-week period. The health and safety of our teachers and students is my primary interest and having these smaller class numbers and better chance of being able to social distance with smaller class numbers. Our special needs students have a variety of services that are required, and as a former teacher, I realize that these services are more readily available and can be more frequent if those students are in a school setting. I think that if we can get these grade levels that have smaller numbers started, that we would be able to look at the distancing, the protocol of safety and sanitation, and be able to offer our students, teachers and staff options that could be used as we move into Plan A in January. I hope that we will be able to move all our students soon into Plan January, into January to Plan A. Thank you.
Other comments?
But mine's pretty lengthy, so bear with me. Being on the board since 2015, we've had to face some difficult decisions, but it has led me to one or two things to know how a school system operates. There are so many things that are behind the scenes that the public doesn't realize that goes on in the county office, in the school, and what a teacher has to do to prepare for their students every day. It's almost like looking into a window with foggy glasses. You know the school's doing their job to make your child safe, so you let them go every day. No one can deny that they, that we are all here for the same reason, which is to make Moore County a safe place to our children, to learn and, for our children to learn and grow. We all know children learn best in the classroom setting with their peers. I've spent a lot of time this week and this weekend asking questions, reading emails from teachers, doctors, parents, looking at the data in the presentation that was presented to us last week. If you have not seen it, I encourage you all to go watch it. I have not, I have even watched other county board meetings at 3:00 AM in the morning so I can gain a different perspective. When I heard the governor's announcement about allowing K-5 students back in the classroom, I was, like many of you, very excited. Finally, we get some normalcy and structure back into our children's lives. I know online learning has been a struggle for many parents. I know some parents feel that their child isn't getting challenged enough, while others are overwhelmed of how much work they have to do. We need to make sure that there is still communication between the parent and teachers so frustration or defeat does not happen. I know a middle school, for instance, that is incorporating an online virtual sessions to help with academics so parents don't feel so defeated. I want to think, and I don't know, maybe Dr. Bob knows, but that K-5 would be doing the same thing if there was such issues. My thoughts were to get these kids back in the school immediately, but after hearing the plan last week with its pros and cons and listening to the parents and the teachers, the real reality of it all kicked in. We need to know what is best for teachers and the students. The teachers do not feel comfortable coming back full-time. We need to listen to that. If a teacher gets sick, the entire class is quarantined. If a teacher possibly gets exposed, the entire class is quarantined. If a child is exposed, the entire class is on quarantine. Let's talk about fourth and fifth grade. With the flu season upon us, how are we going to make sure thirty students in a class is safe for seven to eight hours a day? We do not have the luxury on having small class sizes like a private or charter school have. What measures are we going to take in two weeks if we go four days a week? We know the virus isn't going anywhere and we, and when we go back full-time, we need to make sure that proper procedures are remaining in place, like possibly buying dust shields to make sure every child and teacher is safe, especially for classrooms that have thirty students or more. If we were to go four days a week on October 26th, that would be twenty-nine days left of in-person learning. If we choose to remain, what we are continually doing, the students will have about fourteen days of in-person learning. The challenges we face for four days, the challenges we face for four days in in-person learning would be all the challenges that will have to go on for your child. Teachers will be moved. Student schedules will be changed. Your child's teacher may even change. Then, when January comes along, there'll be a change again due to the virtual kids wanting to come back to the classroom. Let's not forget that these teachers are teaching in person and teaching the virtual academy as well. If there was a way to slowly rotate in without compromising health, safety and change, I would be open to that. But from the presentation from last week, it does not seem possible. I know just from all the hard decisions we had to make, that I'm not going to please everyone here tonight. I'm here to do my job, which is making choices for what is best for everyone. My vote would be to keep students to Plan B unless there was some alternative way to slowly migrate children in safely without change. And I'm about to ask a serious question right now. What do you think a superintendent and administration team would recommend that we wait? Why do you think that? Do you really think that Moore County Schools has it out for your child and doesn't want them to succeed? This is what I have been noticing online lately. It's always easier to point out the negative rather than trying to help and make it a positive situation. Moore County has to look at the whole picture. Before you start to go online and bash administration and possibly us, the board, please think about what are you trying to prove? Our children are watching you. Whether you know it or not, they are smarter than you think, and at some point, you need to ask yourself, how is this negativity helping the situation right now? Instead, think about, how could you, what can you do to help us? What could you do to help? How could you help rather than just complain and stir unnecessary actions? I know we are better than this, and I want everyone to succeed. Wouldn't you rather have a place that would be safe and effective for all children versus a plan of unknown and uncertainty? Thank you.
Now, I'll make all my comments now instead of waiting to the end. Okay. We good now? I would like very much to have all our students back in school five days a week. The governor has stated school districts could have all their K-5 students back full-time if they determined that that was best for their particular district. Rights or responsibilities, which one is more important? Is sending all our K-5 students back to school full-time now more important than ensuring we have done everything we can to reduce the risk of COVID-19 before we send them back? Do we, don't we have a greater responsibility to do it in a way we can ensure our students and staff are safe? My number one concern as a school board member for nineteen years has always been the safety and security of our students and staff, just as it was for my employees and my forty-plus years of business management experience. In this case, the COVID-19 risk factor and my responsibility to protect our students and staff overrides our right to send all our K-5 students back full-time until we are as prepared as we can possibly be to ensure their safety. This is similar to my position on wearing a mask. I have the right not to wear a mask, but I have a greater responsibility to protect myself, my family, and all those with whom I come in contact. Having an degree in biology and chemistry, I've learned to take the advice of experts on COVID-19 before making my decisions. I know you can always find someone who you consider an expert to support your position on any subject, but I prefer to listen to the majority of the experts on the subject before I make my decision. This is not only true for COVID-19, but for all decisions I need to make as a school board member. When I need to make a decision on educational issues, I listen to the experts and to the public and then make my decision based on my nineteen years of experience and thousands of hours of training as a school board member to determine what would be most beneficial for our students. As a school board member, with safety and security as my number one concern, I will always make the decision that will ensure all our students are graduated well-prepared for college or career. This is a final grade on how we, as the public school board members, have done in fulfilling our responsibility for North Carolina K-12 public education. Since I mentioned both business and education, I have a question for you. Which is more difficult, ensuring a company makes a profit or ensuring all our students graduate well-prepared for college or career? For 2020, I would have to give us an A grade. We have the twelfth-highest graduation rate, ninety-three point five out of the hundred and fifteen public school districts in North Carolina, and we're number one in the forty-two public school districts graduating over seven hundred students. Our career and technical education program was one of the very best in North Carolina and was one of only a few that exceeded all eight state goals for academic attainment, reading language arts, academic attainment, mathematics, technical attainment, secondary school completion, student graduation rates, secondary placement, non-traditional participation, non-traditional completion. And the credentials awarded to our CTE students rose from five hundred and thirty-four in 2016 to three thousand nine hundred and twenty-three in 2019, a six hundred and thirty-four percent increase. I am proud of the accomplishments of our students, Dr. Grimace, and all Moore County Schools employees, and proud to be a member of the Moore County Schools Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments began with us being leaders and knowing that reopening schools to have students physically present, that's our goal. That's our ultimate goal. However, the process for transitioning to Plan A has to be planned, innovative, to ensure the well-being of our students and our staff. We have staff and parents who are afraid to have their students return to the classroom. We began our school with a plan that was well-developed during summer months that required face coverings for everyone, six feet of social distancing, screen checks. for everyone, six feet of social distancing, screen checks. And we offered a virtual plan for, for parents who wanted to homeschool, who, who were not comfortable. And we've been consistent with the process of school entry, for transportation, for disinfecting classrooms, and we have had lower rates with COVID-19 infections as compared to some of our surrounding counties. We know that the flu season, this is fall, is upon us, and having our students less than six feet apart in classrooms with 31 students is, is not ideal. Students will have to eat in the classrooms, and there will be no social distancing. And this has been recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Our Moore County Health Department provided a recommendation that we wait until January, and I, I feel that is the process that we need to take. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there other comments?
I have comments.
Mr. Weaver?
Looking back at the beginning of this school year, it should be noted that Moore County Schools understood the benefits to students of in-school instruction and started under a Plan B option, while many of our surrounding school districts went with a completely virtual option under Plan C. I feel that our focus on a safe, measured, and responsible approach at that time allowed us to be successful to this point. However, even with our best efforts to ensure the safety of students, teachers, and staff, we have seen infections in our schools. As of last Friday, only seven of our schools remain without a positive case of COVID. Also, Moore County and the surrounding counties are seeing a rise in infection rates. Moving to a Plan A for our K-5 students is not risk-free, and there are many factors that must be considered to making such a move. Will there be enough teachers returning to the classroom? Will student schedules need to be adjusted? Will teacher-student reassignments be necessary? Additionally, we must consider the recommendation of our Health Department in making any decision on moving to Plan A. The same measured and responsible approach that was made at the beginning of the year should be exercised now. Thank you.
All right, someone would like to call the question?
I have one more comment. I'm sorry. Most of you have said some of the things I've been thinking about, and I think our discussion today has been very helpful. I do want to say, as a working parent myself, when we started coming to these discussions in August about what was going to happen with schools not opening, when we understood that that could not happen, I was very concerned. I studied a lot about childcare, and I worked in, in childcare policy earlier in my career, and it, it was clear that this was going to be a major, major issue for working families and how to juggle and how to, how to manage all of this. In August, early August or mid-August, I, I gathered a group of, of community leaders together in, who were dealing with childcare, and, and my goal was to, first of all, make sure they understood what was coming, because I knew that parents were going to struggle. So I talked to a lot of the town Parks and Recs departments, Boys and Girls Club, Northmore Family Resource Center, I brought in Pinehurst Resort, First Health, some of the big employers and, and some of the churches to say, what can we do? How can we support our families? And, because I knew that this was going to be a challenge. And through these discussions, it became really clear that there was, it was very difficult for a rural community like ours to be able to establish a coalition like Wake did to provide childcare learning centers and virtual learning centers, just because of the type of county we live in. You know, we're just very widespread, and we have people working all over the place. And another challenge that this group really came to understand was that being able to hire staff to provide learning center support and even childcare support was going to be difficult. And the real kicker in my mind was that there were a lot of state regulations about childcare and supporting families that I, at the, was not aware of, because regulations for childcare vary state by state, and, and one of them was that childcare providers at that time were, were not allowed to provide full-day care, including virtual learning, which really just kind of blew me away, actually. I said, how, how is that supposed to work? I guess I'm telling this story because what I understood at the end of this dialogue, we had several meetings with this group, and I'm proud to say that, you know, one of the big employers was actually able to, you know, re-establish a childcare license program. Another one is thinking about it. Several churches are starting to do some things that are within the law. But what I learned from this conversation with people is that this is a pandemic. It has disrupted everything, and it's not just the schools, but it's, it's everything. And every group is trying to do the best that they can to support what they can support. So I just tell you that story that, you know, I, I understand and have a great amount of personal investment in making sure that, that families have the supports they need, and everybody working together can do a little piece of the puzzle. And so I'm very happy that some churches have stepped up, some after-school programs have gone into place, and the Northmore Family Resource Center has some, some after-school resources and grants that they've got, and so everybody's trying to do a little bit. And by doing that, we can all come together as a, as a community. And I just tell that story, I hadn't planned to tell that story, but we're just in a very unusual time, and from my point of view, the, the infection rates for children, I think you're right, that the, the infection rates aren't really there. But the problem is, is it's our staff. They are 100% of the people that operate our buildings. And hearing from the Health Department and understanding, you know, their recommendation, and then really hearing about the fact that we did jump in and provide two days of school for every single student that wanted to be in school is something that not all districts were able to do, and we've done it well, we've held it together well. But the uncoupling of that and being able to switch gears quickly is challenging. And to me, that disruption that is going to harm the students and the staff in terms of having to switch teachers and switch classrooms, to me, that is weighing more heavily on me right now, the disruption fees, knowing that we want to do it all again in January, when we can hopefully even get our six to 12 students in. And that's what I'm hoping, is that we can just do it all at once, and everybody comes back in January. I know we can't say anything about that, because we don't know yet what the governor will, will decide, but I just think being thoughtful about this and, and making sure that we don't disrupt and that if, if every part of the community comes together and tries to find solutions, I think that's how Moore County is going to get through this together. So, thank you for letting me say my comment.
All right, the question has been called, is there a second?
I seconded it earlier.
All right, Ms. Wallen Miller, second. So, question was called by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Wallen Miller. Hearing no objections, we will now move to vote. The, the motion in question is to move to Plan A in transition all K-5 students to in-person instruction in January 2021. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Brown expresses a no vote. The motion carries 6-1. Thank you. It's a lot of good discussion, a lot of information. Might we go back and look just for a moment at the timeline?
I'll defer to Dr. Lachler.
So the parents might know what to expect.
It'd be the last couple of slides.
There we go. That we'll be looking for requests for transfer, transportation requests.
Yeah, that would be, that would be scaffolding work that would occur during these last remaining days of October that we have, making a determination of what the framework for the Connect Academy will be, what that enrollment will look like, and setting forth and beginning to communicate the re-enrollment processes for second semester, and then actually requesting parent determinations of whether or not they're going to need bus transportation for the second semester. We did that first semester. Again, we'll encourage parents, if they can, to transport their children, and in order to try to suppress the number of riders, we will have two ri, up to two riders per seat under Plan A, and so we will follow the same protocol we followed in the summer. First two weeks in November, we'll open up the Connect Academy enrollment and re-enrollment. This will be the opportunity for those families that are nervous about having more students in school and, and losing social distancing. If they prefer to go to all remote learning, this will be their chance to indicate that. And for those that have concluded that remote learning is not for them during the first semester, this will be their opportunity to move over, but they will do so with full awareness that we will have all students in, in-person instruction on, at, at least to begin with, four days a week. And that doesn't mean we have to stay at four days a week the whole second semester. We'll plan accordingly for that. So that option will be on the table, and we'll report back to the board accordingly. November 16th to 18th, scheduling and staffing of the Connect Academy and the face-to-face classes for second semester. The goal is to have everybody set up, parents and teachers, everybody knowing what their schedules are when they come back on January 5th. Transportation letters will be issued during those couple of weeks. Again, we want, a, a, as much as we want everyone to know what their class schedules are, we also want to know what buses they're going to be on. Do all the problem-solving, work out all the bugs and that, so that come January 5th, we're ready to roll face-to-face for all K-5 students. I anticipate that regardless of the outcome of the election, we'll still have Governor Cooper after the holidays, so there's a chance that we could still be in Plan B instruction for six through 12. But regardless of who wins the election, I don't think it's a question of when, it's how soon in the second semester, six through 12 will move back. So regardless whether it's Mr. Forrest or, or Mr. Cooper, I, I think we'll be making that transition, so we're going to plan accordingly for that and be ready for it. I don't think it'll happen right at the beginning, but it could happen, you know, as early as maybe February 1st. Simultan, and, and of course, that, as I just indicated, we plan for it. And I think that's it, Miss, Madam Chair, Dr. Lachler, I, I hope I covered it okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Lachler. All right, at this point, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
I have nothing to add to the many reports and recommendations that were offered during the work session last week, Madam Chair. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there board comments? Anybody got anything left to say? All right, then I do. I am pleased that we have completed our deliberation and gone with the board's decision to implement Plan A with the start of the new semester in January. It's been a most difficult decision, and we have truly attempted to listen to all sides of the question. As much as parents in favor of immediate reopening would like to argue, this was a decision that could not be just all about the children. Yes, we want children back in the classroom. We want to see their social interaction and their healthy development, but it is also about our teachers, our custodians, bus drivers, and administrators. We also want them back in our schools, and we must make every effort to protect their health as well. To those who say, if a teacher doesn't want to work, then hire a new one, I wish it was so simple. Believe it or not, teachers and bus drivers don't grow on trees. However, I know that our Moore County teachers and their fellow workers are some of the most caring, most dedicated employees you will ever meet, and I certainly hope we will not ever need to replace one because he or she does not feel the school environment is safe. To those who say the school board can't take a stand, look again. We took a stand, but it just may not be the answer you wanted. We took the stand that will keep our children and the employees who work with them in a safe, consistent school model for the next seven weeks. Let us be glad that Moore County has had its doors open since August and continues to lead the way for a full return. Thank you. All right, at this time, as there is no more public address...
Madam Chair, may move the meeting be adjourned.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Dennison, seconded by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. The meeting is adjourned.